All right, it's six o'clock and I'll call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. Appreciate everybody attending. Good to see some new faces in the crowd today, too. Kathy's, oh, we do have a quorum present, yes. We just have Harold missing who's down in Florida Keys. On business, I'm sure, yes. He'll like that we called him out, I'm sure, yeah. Kathy's gonna lead us in our invocation.
If you leave out with me, we thank you for this day and thank you for all the doing and things. We thank you for the hard work, um, we all put forth. We pray that, um, we make our citizens proud, we pray to make our council proud too. We pray work for them as they make decisions, um, for the best of the beauty, we pray that they're thankful, understanding and discernment. We thank you for all that you do, we thank you for all those that are here and doing some of these things.
Hey, may I please join for our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in whose resolve with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the councils had the opportunity to review the consent agenda, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion for Rebecca.
Second.
Second from Marty Allen, favor.
Aye.
Items of community interest, does anybody have anything they'd like to share here? You know, at Spring Fest, all went good, right? Yeah, yeah. Anything else cooking that, anybody like to share? Anybody visiting have anything? Jim, you probably got something, items of community interest, no?
The only thing I think is maybe combining, um, Spring Fest and Viper Ride next year. I was sort of having it on the same, we haven't.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea, yeah. All right, well, we also have, nobody signed up to speak during citizen participation. So, it's six oh two and I'm gonna open our public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to hear evidence for or against a request made by C. Wayne Volman, DBA C. Wayne Volman and Associates LLC to replat the property located on the Northwest Access Road between Loves Travel Stop and Galloway Street, Mount Vernon, Texas. I don't think, um, Wayne has anybody here to speak to that, but...
Jim, you can...
Jim, okay, great, Jim, you did, anything, feel free to, if you'd like to share anything.
Just come and explain what, what you want to do. State your name, um, if you're in my call.
Hello, my name is, uh, Jim Coleman. I'm a land surveyor, uh, owner of Cypress Surveying. Um, a while back, Wayne Volman contracted me to do some survey work for him. He purchased, uh, some acreage from, uh...
Industrial Foundation.
I think it was Franklin County Industrial Foundation. And, uh, then he, you know, is wanting to break that up into four lots. Uh, currently, there is a still building on, uh, what we're calling Lot Four. And, uh, the other three lots are vacant at this time. I have not heard of what plans he wants to do with the other three lots. I believe he is looking to sell them to somebody to develop, um, it, and, uh, put business on it that are, would be consistent with, uh, what he has now. The current still building is to be, uh, I believe sold to, uh, Freedom Lay as a loadout facility. Other than that, that's about all I know.
That's, that's good though, Jim, yeah, I appreciate you being here. He had told me you were coming to represent him tonight, so I'm glad you're here.
Any questions?
No.
Backhand questions.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, though.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
All right, the, uh, the other public, the other purpose of this hearing is to hear evidence for or against the Economic Development Corporation's purchase of property that can be described as two oh two Jackson Street, Mount Vernon, point five one acre tract, and the Joseph Talbot Survey, A four ninety-three, and Joseph Sloan Survey, A four twenty-five, from the FCAD parcel number four oh one one nine and three oh three North Kaufman Street, point two eight acre tract in the Joseph Talbot Survey, A four ninety-three, FCAD parcel number nine six six eight. Why have we gotta read all this?
I guess I'll speak to it, can I speak from here?
Can you read your name?
My name is Steel Craigland. Last week, the Economic Development Corporation Board, uh, voted to approve the purchase of two parcels of property. One is a half acre that's vacant and one is about a quarter acre that has a building on it. And they're purchasing it on behalf and for the use, a future use for the city. And we appreciate their willingness to do that. That's all I have.
These are over by the park.
They're all, they're, yes, in that proximity. It's okay.
Look at her, see, she's going to go. I knew I wanted to make sure that I've been reading this right.
You're, you're reading it absolutely correctly.
All right, and it, and the, uh, the third, um, purpose of this hearing is to hear evidence for or against an amendment to the zoning ordinance and adopting land use ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, as you're well aware, as the council's aware, the, uh, MHS planning has been working diligently over the last four or five months on, uh, our future land use plan, um, and they've completed that. Uh, they were here last month presenting that to council at a workshop. Uh, they've also completed an amendment to the zoning ordinance. And, uh, that's, uh, we're just holding this public hearing prior to y'all making a decision with, regarding an adoption of those two documents.
All right. So it is six oh six and I'll close the public hearing. On items to be considered, we'll start with item number two. Consider an act of, on, consider an act upon approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero four, adopting the replat, request by C. Wayne Volman, property ID fifty twenty geographic ID. Y'all can read that, zeros are eighty-five, one twenty, four lots. Anyway, this is a, this is pretty basic stuff. Wayne's making the rest of that property, uh, available to be developed and thankfully, he's done it on the front end and got Mr. Coleman to get it surveyed out and planted properly. So, that property can be marketed and put to work for the next buildings to go on it. So this is, instead of sitting on stuff and he's, uh, he's pushing, uh, pushing things forward and, and, and moving forward with a plan. So it's great to see somebody buy something and, and try to put it to work right now.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what this is, so.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
Motion.
Motion, you second? Second from Marty, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Jim will tell him, be pushing over the line for him.
Tell him it was tough, he had to deal with the negotiating.
No, thanks for getting that thing tidied up for him, yeah. All right, item four, consider an act upon a, appro, upon approval of resolution twenty-five dash zero eight, adopting the land use plan. So we've done this through pu, uh, public hearings and, I mean hearings, but, uh, workshops and...
Workshops and several meetings.
Yeah, several meetings, so this is... Did I skip three? Well, okay, we'll do four first and then do three. I've already read it, yeah.
This is this hundred seventy-four line page deal we're looking at here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there will be a test on it next month.
And this was the last workshop when he came to talk about all this.
Yes, sir.
I think the hundred seventy related to zoning is more is land use.
Land use is about thirty, forty.
It's a good word, too. We do need a motion to approve the land use plan.
Make a motion.
Motion from Marty. I'm sorry?
I'll second.
Second from Rebecca, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, number three. Consider an act upon approval of the Economic Development Corps purchase of property that can be described as two oh two Jackson Street, Mount Vernon, point five one acre tract, Joseph Talbot Survey, A four ninety-three, and the Joseph Sloan Survey, A four twenty-five, FCAD parcel number forty-one nineteen and three oh three North Kaufman Street, a point two eight acre tract in the Joseph Talbot Survey, Survey, A, A four ninety-three, FCAD parcel number nine six six eight, and appointing City Administrator Craig Lindholm as designated signer for the closing documents. We want to make sure Craig has the ability to close on this.
Yes, now?
Now.
Is it, is this, it's like landlocked and this is an opportunity to buy some property for future, okay.
For future city use.
Okay.
And we're voting on both of them?
To purchase.
To, to, to purchase.
Okay.
Where, we will only be closing on one of them at this time.
Okay.
This is that beauty shop that sits between here and the splash pad, right against the splash pad.
And then that other one is like what?
And the land rapture around the back side of it.
Kind of by the splash pad.
Correct, yeah. So we need a motion to...
Motion.
A motion from Mark.
Second.
Second from Mary, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, item number five, consider an act upon approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero three, amending the zoning ordinance. And, and I'm excited to finally get to this point. So we go from being very vulnerable to really bringing ourselves, the last time we updated zoning was fifty years ago or whatever.
It was in the seventies.
Didn't we have some question based off that workshop you, you was gonna follow up with us on? I forget exactly what it was, it was a couple of the, uh, I can't remember. Zoning, like, most tied together?
He was going to add the red work for downtown and he did that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it was. Good thing about what we're doing, too, it gives us a lot of flexibility to consider project by project and so it's not things that can't be addressed when we, if an opportunity comes along. But it gives us a lot of protection from things just showing up that we didn't have the ability to have any say in. So we need a motion to approve the new zoning ordinances.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Motion from Marty.
I'll say.
Second from Rebecca, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item number six, consider, yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm gonna pick sixteen.
In your leisure. Oh, that's right, so we're gonna wait till next, uh, the May meeting on this one, we're not prepared for that one yet.
And, and the reason we're doing that is because Parks and Wildlife has encouraged us to apply for phase two grant of, like, for the amphitheater and bathrooms. And they want to do this at one time, so that we only have to pay one consultant.
Cool.
Hey, you did a yes.
Yeah, for those who don't know, we got a seven hundred and fifty thousand grant, dollar grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And, uh, so this is kind of cool, they're drawing out all the opportunities to have us put it to work the best. And then Texas Parks and Wildlife came back and said, we'd like y'all, like y'all to apply for even more grant funding. And one of the things they like is that we've, um, I don't wanna say this just so it's all recorded for in the future, too, but, um, instead of just having Little Creek Park as a park, y'all did this as a council, we, we made the city lake and the land around it a park. We also made the plaza a park. The higher percentage of land you have in your city limits that is a park versus, not park, you know, higher percentage is, the better it looks and the better you rank applying for grants. And, uh, so we'd like to see walking trail, running trail around the lake, I mean, that's a, that's a big park, right? So, anyway, it's encouraging to see that the things we're doing are, they're absolutely, uh, leading to positive progress, too. So we'll do this next month and apply for it as one project again.
It was nice for them to ask us to apply. It's always a very good sign.
Well, when she came and did the inspection, she was very, she went before she called us down there. She was very pleased that from the very original grant that we got, we still hold it in, whatever we bought during that time. So she was pleased that we were doing here, but it's good.
So now some fun stuff, here, a little catch up from the guys?
Yes, yeah, I think that we need to char, start with our Public Works Director and...
All right, I'm just gonna go over the major things that we've accomplished. Chad Pike, Public Works Director. All right, uh, in the last few months, we completed the, the meter installation minus, we're still waiting on two meters, two three inch meters, they're backward. We talked about selling the old meters to whoever would like them, scrap them, bring revenue in. And everybody wanted them, nobody showed up. So now, when the guys have downtime, they're breaking down the meters, cities that's gonna sell them, we'll make a little more that way, too. We completed the wastewater treatment renovation, the water plant treatment renovation, it's, it's done. We're still working on organizing stuff around the maintenance barn, but it's getting a lot better. We helped the county. We located and exposed the leak to their geothermal system so they could have it repaired. Looked in the water main on Talbot Street, so, you know, it was a deadened main that we wasn't aware about, so we looked it in. So now, there's water circulating through there. And we're currently working with electricians and a concrete contractor at the wastewater plant, trying to get the new generator from Missouri here and getting bids and prices on what it's gonna cost to finish that job. We're also working with the animal shelter. You know, they have a, a long list of stuff that they, the state would like to see. So we're gonna try to work that into our, our schedule. And then, I got a survey man on Scott Street, we'll get done soon as we can. And then I'll, all the rest of the department heads, getting more in detail than what they've got.
Thanks, Chad.
Kyle?
Those who don't know, I'm Kyle Rogers, uh, Department Head for, uh, Maintenance and Utilities. Yeah, I kinda feel like this has been the season of remodels and new builds because we started with our office, moved to Kathy's office, we, they were built up here. Uh, we assisted in the remodels for both, uh, wastewater and, uh, freshwater plants. We redid the plumbing for the bathrooms, we completely built, uh, freshwater plants bathroom. Uh, sheet rock from the ground up painted, uh, redid the ceiling tiles, the trim work, I mean, our department did it all. Uh, and we are currently assisting for the, uh, animal shelter paws in their remodel. We gotta do some concrete work, we gotta tear down some walls, expand their laundry room for washing dog blankets and such. Concrete work, we gotta cut new drainage ditches because that's one of the state requirements for, uh, all the kennels, they have to have a ditch, you know, where the waste can be drained to, easier to clean, too. As Chad had mentioned, we, uh, recently changed out all of the meters in town or had a subcontractor company to come in and do all that. It's, I mean, it's really a good thing. It used to take us nearly a whole day to get every meter in town red. Now we can do the whole town in an hour. So, you know, that's a lot more time in the day to knock out all these other projects we got going on. Been keeping up with our normal duties, you know, we've had wat, people come in, need water and sewer taps. And of course, you know, we do a water and sewer tap, now we gotta repair the roads, so... I don't know if any of y'all have been driving down the streets lately, we have had a few potholes since these major rains. I've had the guys lined up redoing all of that today, doing a lot of patchwork. So, it's, it's being taken care of, kind of gonna juggle and act all the projects we got going on. Also, uh, mowing season's upon us. We've been busy mowing the park, mowing the square, uh, welcome sign, you know, laundry list of things. We gotta mow, shred, all of our rideaways. Oh, we also help assist at the Spring Festival, you know, we installed it. Yeah, we, we in, uh, we installed and repaired the, uh, faucets down at the park and made a retainer with a rock wall with a fresh rock laid out through there. We'll be cutting a drainage ditch over there beside the splash pad as well. And, uh, that's pretty much what I got as far as we got going on right now and projects we've knocked out, so.
Thanks, Kyle.
You guys don't get bored, do you?
No time for that.
James.
So James has put together a dance...
No, no, I'm James Whitehurst, I'm supervisor or Department Head for the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, since January, we've had quite a few things we've done. We've had, uh, we swapped out, uh, pump, one of our large flat pumps on lift station number two. Uh, I believe that was one of our forty thousand dollar pumps. Uh, we've got one set in the shop right now, but we're gonna hold off on rebuilding it right now. We've also had lift stations, uh, number four and number five, we did electrical work to them. They've got their own little metering system that tells us, reads back to the, to our phones and stuff. We had some issues with the Omni box, so one of my guys is real good in electronics, so he hooked it up and got it all going himself. So, uh, I'm proud of that for him. Uh, we've also finished up the tool room, we all have new lights, new paint, new shelf, all in the tool room. Uh, service team, this, uh, service team, we had a, uh, open house, which everybody knew of two, four, of twenty-five, we had our open house at the wastewater plant. Uh, we had some float issues with our fine screen, so we've worked on our fine screen and raised our level of our floats to help more flow. Uh, it was going off too soon, running too often, so we've kind of fixed it. Uh, IT, we've redone all the wifi to the plant, all our skating systems all been moved into our lab, as y'all know, and, and all the wiring, everything has been changed up, redone. Uh, we had our air radiator serviced back in, uh, here just, just recently, uh, the end of February. And, uh, they said everything was good, but, uh, I think next year we're not gonna use them. Uh, I was not really impressed with their work, so I feel like I'm gonna change that. We've had some RAS pumps issues, we've got one RAS pump that's our return activated sludge. Uh, matter of fact, it's at the shop right now and I'm waiting on a bid on it for rebuild. We've got three others that are running, it, there's a total of four, we got three running right now. So right now, we're okay, we have backups while we're running. KSA was out to do surveys, they did survey on all manholes, all final structures, everything out there. Did a lot more in-depth surveys this time. We also cleaned up the animal shelter, we helped the animal, we moved the animal shelter from wastewater to the new facility. Uh, we've got everything cleaned up down there, all the kennels are out. Office is all cleaned up, all the chain links gone, uh, so we've got it all cleaned up. Uh, we did some repair work on air radiator number four, we put a hub assembly on with Chad and utility guys come out and helped us. Uh, we needed some way to lift it, uh, so they helped us with all that. We've cut floor drains into our belt press room. Our water would just run out the building, it's been rusting out the side of the building. Chad and his guys come over and we did, they cut drains in the floor for us. It's made it a lot nicer than what it was, it don't go everywhere. And, uh, I've been in touch with KSA, our wastewater permit will go out three, uh, two thousand twenty-six. So we will, we'll be renewing our wastewater treatment plant permit.
All right, thank you, James. The cleanest house plant ever, Mr. Davis built.
Blake, come on up, thank you.
Counsel, Mayor, manager, uh, Blake Sheffield, Fire Chief here in Mount Vernon. Got, um, from January first to March thirty-first of this year, we've run three hundred and eleven calls for service. Uh, so we're on pace this year already to hit twelve hundred and forty-four calls, that'll be a ten percent increase from twenty twenty-four. Uh, we've had a hundred and seventeen calls in the city, a hundred and forty-seven calls in the county. We have had also, uh, forty-six no response. So, these are calls, normally these are, uh, around fourteen percent, which is about average for what we've been going. These are calls usually that are medical calls at nighttime, on the weekends, that knows, you know, they'll call for the volunteer departments and, and nobody will show up. That's kind of is. We're about, we've got about twenty or thirty fire hydrants left in the city to be fully, uh, complete. So we will have inspected every fire hydrant within, in the city and we'll have that done here by the end of this month. And this is something that's not only just something for the fire department, this is something for our ISO rating. So these are points that you get for your ISO, so right now, the city of Mount Vernon is sitting at ISO four, which is what your insurance is based off of, and so with, with the hydrants doing, uh, that, take care of these hydrants, uh, e- every, every other year, that will help us in points so we can drop that and help lower insurance rates for people's homes.
Do we know when the last time they were inspected?
I do not, I'd have to call the state fire marshal and see when that was done. Was it, so we're due for one. So having this stuff will help us, this, the reporting system, having the hy- hydrants inspected, uh, all these stuff will give us more points to lower our ISO. We currently have four, uh, firefighters here in Mount Vernon that are enrolled in commissioned classes. Three of them are Inspector One and Two. I think I talked about that earlier this year, this year, but these, uh, they're about two-thirds of the way through their classes. And they supposedly have reported that they're all, have As in their classes. We, uh, also have one more, one firefighter that is enrolled in the basic structural firefighting class, he is almost finished with it. He will have his two weeks of on hands in, in June, and then once he's done, he will be a certified firefighter. These classes are all paid for through the Texas Forest Service through a grant, so they're a hundred percent reimbursement. Oh, yeah, also, March thirteenth last month, we had our bi annual inspection for the commission, this is a big thing that's done every, every two years. We basically, I, I say we scored a ninety-five, we had one, uh, one deduction or, uh, thing we were written up for, and it was basically a deficiency in the documenting of the inspection of our hoods. So the hoods nowadays have to, you have to hold them up, stick a light up through there, if a light shows, shines through the hood and it fails, well, we didn't do that and properly document that. That's been taken care of, remedied, so, and we've got, so we've got Clean Bill of Health through the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. So we have two years, uh, for that. Also, we received three bids to remodel the fire station. Firefighters are not as gifted as a lot of these other city guys, you know, as far as doing our own remodeling. These guys are talented in that, firemen not so much, uh, so...
You're more good at knocking holes.
They tear up, we tend to tear up more stuff.
Rubbing rubs off.
Station was built in eighty-seven, so I think when the bu, when the station was built, it was not ready to accommodate any potential overnight stain or, or housing. So there's just something that we're looking at in the future. Uh, got a report from the Texas Forest Service, they're expecting a dry summer this year. So we will have an elevated fire risk for wildland and fire hazards and grass fires and things like that out in Mc, uh, out in Mc County and around the city. So these are things that we're trying to nip in the bud as far as taking care of mechanical issues. So each apparatus that we've got has got little issues and we're slowly working on them, a little bit at a time, trying to take care of them. Usually if we have to send it off, an apparatus will be gone for two to three weeks. So we're trying to fix what we can here and then hold off before we send it off and have that fixed. Uh, last, the city has sent over an interlocal agreement with the county. Uh, this is to provide fire protection to the unincorporated areas of Franklin County. This will not only help for fire protection and response times throughout the county, this will also help with the people that have had insurance issues around the county outside of, outside the city of Mount Vernon. If you're outside the city of Mount Vernon, say, in the north side of the county and the south side of the county, out past five miles, you're, you have, you now have an ISO of a ten, which is declared as a no, no fire protection. So a lot of these people have seen their insurance rates go up, if not being dropped. I, usually the first of the month, I'll get several calls when somebody's insurance is up for renewal, they'll call the Mount Vernon Fire Department, say around the lake or up around Higgins Ford, asking for help from the fire department as far as writing a letter saying that we recover, technically we can't do that because it's outside of our fire protection. So, so anyway, we've, we've submitted a interlocal with the county and we're basically waiting for a response or questions on that at this time. Any questions?
Great job. Hey, Blake.
On the, the fire engine, transmission was out or had transmission problems? Did we ever get anything resolved on that?
It was a, what they call a shifter solenoid, so basically helps put it in, get it out of here. With that, that particular apparatus, the, you had to break the transmission apart, it's inside the transmission, but yes, sir. We let that take care of it.
All right, thanks, Blake.
I'm Jennifer with, with the Animal Shelter and Animal Control in Mount Vernon. So we're in our new shelter now, um, we're organizing everything, trying to get labeled so we know where all of our supplies are. We're, it's an amazing building, the animals are having a blast in their play yard and we're able to disinfect fully the cement pad that they play on and stuff. Um, we're just trying to get all the paperwork in order for our volunteers and all the other mini paperwork that we had to do. It was amazing to have the state come out and evaluate our facility and tell us what ways we need to fix it. Um, but, we have a bright future there and we're super excited.
You taking some animals in, you've had some come in, right?
Yes, we've had some come in, luckily, over fifty percent that have come in have been reclaimed. So we've been able to find their original owners and return them, which has been phenomenal. Last year, we didn't have very many re- Last year, we didn't have very many reclaims, we had a few here and there, but this year, we're doing really good on the reclaims. Facebook is doing great, people are spreading it, if they see an animal, they're telling their neighbor, and we're getting them back to their original owner, which is phenomenal. So, we have a bright future and we're super excited, we can't wait to see what the future holds.
Elon Musk and J D are getting along well too. I adopted a little black cat, and I, and I named it Elon Musk.
So somebody adopted a cat last week too, and they named theirs Elon too.
They did!
Yeah, I was like.
Set a trend, okay.
Exactly.
I got the, the last one I adopted, I named it J D Vance, so we got J D Vance and Elon Musk.
So now you need to adopt one and name it Trump?
Yeah.
Looking for a puppy.
A puppy.
Yep.
We've got three, before you go adopt another, let's save me, I'll give you one.
But thank you for all you do, counsel.
Thanks, Jennifer.
We always save the best for last.
Uh, my name is Leah Thomas, I'm a lieutenant for the Mount Vernon Police Department. Um, from January the first till April the first, we have responded to six hundred and seventy-six calls for service. We have also made nine hundred and thirty-nine traffic stops, as well as, uh, thirty-nine arrests. We have also completed nine crash reports, and so there's been nine accidents inside the city limits where we had to do a report and send it to, um, Tex dot. And there has also been a hundred and three reports that have been done and submitted to C I D, which is me and Jason. So a hundred and three reports so far this year has been submitted to me and Jason for, uh, investigations, and, um, to be sent over to county attorney and, um, district attorney. I'd also applied for, um, two grants this year, so applied for one through Homeland Security, which was for the ballistic shields, as well as the, uh, gas mask. I'd also applied through JAG for six desktop computers. And we had a committee meeting last week based on the JAG pertaining to the desktop computers, and they are recommending for us to get full funding for it. Doesn't mean we're a hundred percent there yet, but they are recommending for us to get the funding, so. Um, haven't heard anything on the other one, so hopefully I should hear something in the next couple of weeks on that one. And that's really all we have, trying to keep everything.
On the, the, uh, grants we got on the, the cameras, those coming in handy for y'all?
So, the flock cameras we have now, we did not get with a grant. But when we did apply for the grant for the additional flock cameras, we have not heard anything back on those.
E D C bought those.
Yeah. Oh, they're very helpful, oh, oh yeah. The cameras we have, they are, they are very, very useful.
Yeah, I won't ask you for details, I was just asking how they were working out.
No, we have, and, and actually I'm starting to kinda, they've kinda updated the system now with the flock cameras, to where anytime we do utilize the cameras, to either, um, solve a crime, or anything related to that, and arrest all that, it now downloads onto a spreadsheet, to where now I can start utilizing and keeping up how often we're using the cameras, and how productive they are at helping us. So, yeah, it's actually, and then, um, the flock cameras here at the square, they have been amazing too. I've been able to actually solve several cases with these cameras.
Well, I thought you were gonna tell me entertaining.
No, no, I don't, I don't enter, I don't watch for that. See enough of that without cameras. So, but no, it's all been helpful.
Good.
So we do appreciate the purchase on all that, y'all, we really do, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Leah.
Alright, you're welcome.
Okay, uh, for me, I just got a couple of things, uh, I got a notification from Mike Ward today that next week they're committed to finishing our audit, which is gonna be helpful, because we need to get it to the Texas, Texas Water Development Board, for, um, it's part of the technical review for the, the big project with the water line, raw water line. So that's basically the last thing that they're waiting on, for that, and also for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, on the twenty-fourth, uh, Chad and James and I have, uh, and probably, uh, Anthony have a meeting with K S A, uh, to look at their, uh, their draft, final draft of engineering for the projects, for the, um, collection distribution, that's for all the projects. To kinda look at that and make sure that we haven't, they haven't missed anything, and that we're all on the same page on that, so that project's moving along quite well. You've been informed about the Parks Project, we're, uh, we have Carthel and Arrington, uh, uh, resurfacing on, on the radar. We ha- that project hasn't been completely approved by, um, the state yet. It's a very long process, through the, that was a grant project, and the client was closing out the grant, so we're not gonna take any action on that until we get that final approval, but it will be done, it's hitting at a good time, because we wanna hit resurfacing a street in very hot, dry weather. Yeah, so we're waiting on that, and then everybody's getting ready to work on the budgets for next year. So that's kinda where we're at with everything, it's been, as you know, it's been a very busy, busy year.
Submitted appropriations request too, right?
We did that this last week, appropriations request for some improvements on the waste, on the water treatment plant, further improvements, and also, uh, for the, uh, reservoir, for City Lake to be designated as a reservoir, a backup reservoir. So, we've, all that's been submitted, and we'll see how, where that goes, so, like I said, it's been busy, busy, so, a- anyway, anybody have any questions?
Thanks, team, for coming and sharing on all your departments, like always, it's my favorite part of our meeting, I think, 'cause I mean, it's, it's, uh, you guys are making it happen, but it, we got, got the best team right now.
We absolutely do.
And you are fun, I like that, I like fun people to work with, but thanks for coming and sharing from all the departments, yeah. Alright, if there's nothing else, uh, and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, counsel.
Okay, we're putting a little bit in this month that we started, we all started here.
We dodged the board.
We did, and, uh.
So what are we doing in the next two to three years?
Chad is speaking, as we're actually applying, uh, that grant process and engine, I'm gonna give a safer grant in college.